I call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Townsend, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we meet tonight to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here tonight. May we act wisely and well. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call a roll?
Mr. Nefer?
Here.
Mr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Lowe?
Here.
Mr. Tevin?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Glenn?
Here.
Ms. Townsend?
Here.
And Mr. Nixon?
Here.
Under privilege of the floor this evening, Mike Block regarding the zoning overlay for Kibbe Corners.
Thank you, Mr. President, councilors. On behalf of the Board of Directors of the Kibbe Corners Development Corporation, thank you for this opportunity to communicate directly with you for the next few minutes. In August 2011, the Kibbe Corners Development Corporation advised Lima City Council the KCDC was initiating a study process for the development of a zoning overlay district for the South Main Street corridor. Tonight, I am pleased to present our final proposal to you for your consideration and, hopefully, implementation. This proposal is the result of more than a year of consultation, public meetings and study sessions with community members, public officials, business owners, and our own consultants. Our outreach included door-to-door canvassing of the corridor, mail solicitations, and multiple in-person and phone conversations as we solicited input from the community about the plan. The Kibbe Corners Development Corporation exists as a nonprofit organization whose mission is to revitalize Lima's South Main Street corridor and the surrounding district. KCDC is an outgrowth of the South Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan, published in 2007 and developed under a federal weed and seed grant. Lima City Council has previously reviewed and approved the corridor enhancement plan as part of the city's comprehensive plan in 2007. Our proposal, the KCDC zoning overlay plan, closely mirrors the recommendations of the 2007 corridor enhancement plan. Our mission, our interest, and our intention is to promote the establishment of a viable, vibrant community through the deliberate, logical, and planned use of existing geographic space in the corridor. The creation of wealth and prosperity are key to rebuilding and sustaining a community. We desperately need to attract businesses to the corridor, which in turn will create jobs. In order to do this, we must create an environment of opportunity. Where many may drive down the existing corridor and see blight, an entrepreneur or developer will see opportunity. But as it now sits, it's a limited opportunity. There's simply too much risk for too little reward. Uncertainty increases risk. Presently, the future development of the corridor is uncertain because there are inadequate guidelines for future land use. Developers and business owners will invest when they have a higher level of certainty that their investment in real estate and real assets will be protected from conflicting land use and when they can see the end game, that is what the desired future state looks like vis-a-vis a zoning overlay plan with specific requirements for future development. We have seen some good things happen: the construction of the new Dollar General, the soon-to-be constructed Ohio Energy and Advanced Manufacturing Center, infrastructure improvements like the Vine Street underpass and new street lighting, and the recent demolition of another vacant building. There are viable businesses along the corridor, but not enough of them. We need to expedite the process of promoting prosperity and opportunity. A zoning overlay can help eliminate uncertainty and stimulate further investment. Tonight, we are asking you to receive this plan and refer it to the appropriate committee for review before sending it to the Planning Commission for approval as required by ordinance. Once that process is complete, it is our hope that the Planning Commission will recommend and council will concur that appropriate final legislation be enacted relative to zoning and design standards for the South Main Street corridor. The KCDC Board of Directors feels strongly about this proposal. We believe our ability to fulfill our mission is inextricably intertwined with the implementation of this overlay. Without it, we do not hold much hope of bringing meaningful, positive change to the corridor. We urge you to adopt our recommendations and stand ready to assist you in any way you deem appropriate. Thank you.
Under the consent calendar?
Mr. President?
Ms. Townsend?
I move that items B, C, D, and E be received and filed, and item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file items B, C, D, and E, and to receive, file, and approve item A. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one?
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Ms. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two?
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that communication number two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three?
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Reinecke Mazda Nissan, Inc.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nefer?
I move that communication number three be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four?
From Chief Hefner requesting legislation to apply for a grant from Walmart Foundation.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nefer?
I move that communication number four be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
Yes, I would like at this time if she'd have to come forward and explain what this money would be used for.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we had received the full amount requested from Walmart Foundation of $5,000, this money would go toward some equipment for the New Safety City building. We're looking at a smart board with a computer that our fire prevention and our LPD officers can put things up on the big screen, move them around, give them a little awe factor there as they do the Safety City presentations. If we would receive a lesser amount, we'll probably use it for either something at Safety City or potentially smoke detectors that we would hand out as part of our survey program. So it depends on the amount that we are granted.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five?
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Gray Bar Electric Company.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nefer?
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six?
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Alphay's Electric Supply.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nefer?
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven?
From the Deputy Director of Public Works requesting legislation to enter into a contract with a successful bidder to the Allen County Fuel Consortium.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nefer?
I move that communication number seven be received and filed and authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight?
From the Auditor requesting legislation to enter into a contract with Sperion.
Mr. President?
Ms. Townsend?
I move that communication number eight be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine?
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a new permit to Kroger Limited DBA real estate services at 2154 Elida Road.
Mr. President?
Ms. Townsend?
I move that communication number nine be referred back to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. That property is not within the city limits.
Second. The motion in the second is to refer communication number eight back to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control since the property is not inside the city limits. Is there any discussion on the motion? I just want to clarify that the clerk will send them a letter stating that it's not in the city limits. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 10?
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to apply for an Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 10. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes. When reading this, at the bottom of the paragraph, it says there's a 25 percent match. However, they would be asking a way due to economical constraints. At this time, Paul Wood, I would ask that the chief come forward and maybe answer the questions if they say no. Who pays this $20,000 and from what fund?
Well, actually, the 25 percent match would be $12,500.
$12,500.
And we would likely be coming back into council to request that from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund to be allowed to utilize that money there. Our hope is that we do not have to do that, and we have had luck in the past on the Byrne Grant, asking for a waiver in those cases. But we do have the money available to us in the Law Enforcement Trust Fund account should that contingency be necessary.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. President, question. The communication is requesting authorization to apply. Do we... The motion was to receive and file. Do we need to also approve? Yeah. I was just going to ask Mr. Lowe if you would restate your motion or make a substitute motion to receive, file, and authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation, which will be a resolution.
Mr. President, I move that communication be received and filed, that the Law Director be authorized to prepare legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 10 and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Under reports of officials, Saul Allen regarding the leaf pickup.
Mr. President, members of council, I've passed out a handout to you with the announcement. The City of Lima Public Works Department is announcing that the leaf pick-up program for the year 2012 is scheduled to begin Monday, November 5th. On November 5th, residents of the 1st, 4th, and 5th wards will be asked to rake and pile leaves to the curb, not in the street. Once again, curb lawn, not in the street, just in case I didn't say it loud enough, not in the street. Pickup in the 2nd, 3rd, 6th, and 7th wards will occur as crews progress. Few helpful hints for residents: leaf bags are available and can be picked up at 900 South Collet or the billing and collections office located on 424 North Central Avenue. Those bags are available. Residents can start bagging that material right now and put it out with their trash pickup. Once again, just in case I didn't say it loud enough, rake all leaves to the curb lawn, not in the street. Our crews do have equipment to handle it once, you know, all that material gets out to the curb. Make sure all those leaves are free of rocks. I always caution people, this is leaf pickup, not debris or limb pickup. We do know there are some residents that are still putting stuff out from the storm back on June 29. We will be bypassing those locations where there may be some limbs also in those leaves. The equipment we have and equipment we'll be using is definitely directed toward leaves. If residents do have that material, they can still take that material out to the compost facility on Hanthorn Road. We will be attempting, as always, two rounds of leaf pickup. What we'd normally like to do is we like to do the first round and try to get the first round done before Thanksgiving, and then right after Thanksgiving, we try to go into the second round. Always caution people that this is a weather permitting, you know, pickup only. If we start to move into the S-word, which is snow, that is becomes a bigger priority for us, so our attempt is to still do two rounds of leaf pickup. Are there any questions?
Mr. President?
Are you finished?
Uh, yeah. He says questions. That's right. Mr. President. But, uh, first question is, any limbs out there, you gonna bypass the... You gonna bypass the leaf pickup? My mind is in other field there. So we gonna make sure no limbs be out there, 'cause they're not gonna pick up your bag of leaves, all right?
Right. Really, the equipment we have is made entirely for leaf pickup, leaves only. We have had issues in the past where we've had rocks and other debris in leaves where we actually had, you know, destroyed the equipment or actually had minor injuries with that stuff being picked up, but luckily together, this is leaf pickup only.
Now, tonight from 10th there, some of the folks in the Perry area saying that they're allowed to bring their leaves over on Hayes Street and stuff like that. I never heard that before. I never heard it. And I told them I'd bring it up tonight. Just got them talking to someone. They were talking about their leaves. We supposed to negotiate with them, they can bring their leaves out. I was gonna make sure. I never heard it, but it'd be best to bring it up because I know I didn't miss no city council meetings that we missed that, so I wanna make sure.
That's beyond me, and that's something council can do if council wishes.
If you wanna do it. Okay? Great. That's all I wanna hear, 'cause I don't wanna say, "Derek Lynn, so we can bring leaves out." No, I did not say that. So that question came up today. So, thank you, Mr. Towns.
And we just... We will be doing the mayor's press conference, and we'll also have put the information out on the website, and we'll be updating the website weekly with this information, so...
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Ordinances?
18412 is the third reading, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with HMS Employer Solutions.
Mr. President?
Ms. Townsend?
I move that ordinance 18412 be placed back on the agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to place ordinance 18412 back on the agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. President?
Ms. Townsend?
I move that ordinance 18412 be passed on the... It's... Third reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 18412 on its third reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
At this time, I'd like to request Mr. Oger if he could possibly come up and address what has been brought up in committee and on council floor and...
Thank you, Councilor Adams. I've got a prepared statement, if it's okay. I'll just go ahead and read that. Ordinance 18412 authorizes a full document review audit of the city's health care plan expenditures as it relates to the provision of health care services for employee dependents. As communicated earlier, council passed an authorization in 2010 to conduct a similar audit, but that audit did not go forward due to changes in federal law that were challenged in the courts. In 2011, the City of Lima spent over $3 million on medical claims alone for employee dependents, and that number does not include prescription drugs. The need for an independent full document audit became apparent at the local level in 2010 when an official at the county who was responsible for health benefit management was found to have committed fraud. That is, they allowed their spouse to remain on the plan after they no longer met the definition of an eligible dependent. Some have suggested that HR conduct the audit. The HR department has operated with a lean workforce for the 10 years that I've had the privilege to serve. We do not have the time or expertise to conduct such an audit. Finally, the selected vendor for the proposed audit has agreed to return any part of the fee that does not assure a positive return on investment. That is, given the assumption that each dependent costs the plan about $3,000 per year, if the audit does not remove enough dependents to cover the cost of the audit, that difference between the audit cost and the savings will be returned to the city. In the worst case, this audit will be cost neutral. As Director of Human Resources, I believe we owe it to the citizens of Lima to assure that tax dollars are spent in accordance with the terms of the city's employee agreements. I therefore recommend that council authorize this audit as one of many strategies the administration has developed and implemented to manage the cost of employee health benefits at the City of Lima.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
No.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
No.
Ordinance 18412 has not passed. It requires five affirmative votes and only has four. So it is defeated by a four to four vote. Ordinance 22012?
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Lima Allen County Neighbors and Partnership.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
I move that ordinance 220-12 be placed on a second reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to place ordinance 22012 on a second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. I'm sorry, ordinance 22112?
Loving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 221-12 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 22112 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 22112 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 22212?
Amending the 2012 annual budget.
Mr. President? Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 22212 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 22212 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 22212 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 22312?
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Sperion, Inc. for contracted services.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nefer?
I move that communication number 22312 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 22312 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I'd like to ask the Law Director if I have the correct understanding. Under the civil service rules, we cannot hire replacement and have them come in prior to this person retiring.
Correct.
So that moves us to go this route until we decide to change that?
Correct.
Where are we at in that process? You know...
I don't know how to answer that, other than that's part of the process, one of the rules that is under consideration to change, so...
Okay. So that will be coming for us, before us in the near future?
Yes, ma'am.
As one of the changes?
Yes, ma'am.
And that would eliminate this need, this action tonight?
I couldn't tell you that, whether it would eliminate these types of laws in the future or not, but at least it would give the administration the opportunity to hire from the civil service process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I just have a couple of things on there, and I agree with the Law Director saying, no, we shouldn't not. I understand the rules have not changed yet, but I feel that it's absolutely wrong that we do this. That is my feelings on that, because we will be violating, and you saying we're not violating. We can do it because we haven't sat down and put nothing together for this, allow the civil service to come in there and work. So, I agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call a roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
No.
Ordinance 22312 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 22512?
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Reinecke Mazda Nissan, Inc. for the purchase of Ford, 2013 Ford Sedan, Sedan Police Interceptors.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nefer?
I move that ordinance number 22512 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 22512 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
I move that ordinance number 22512 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 22512 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neifer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 22512 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 22612.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Gray Bar Electric Company.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neifer?
I move that communication, excuse me, I move that ordinance number 22612 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 22612 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neifer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 22612 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 22712.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with Alphaze Electric Service.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neifer?
I move that ordinance number 22712 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 22712 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neifer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 22712 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 22812.
Amending Section 1804.99 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I mean that ordinance 22812 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 22812 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Being Chairman of the Committee that this was referred to, and having had a couple of meetings on this, one a week ago tonight, I didn't have a report prepared for this evening's meeting, and the Law Department Deputy Director of Law, Tammy Hirsch, prepared this for us tonight, sent out, I believe, advanced copies to the committee members for us for review, and I told her to proceed because I left it with an understanding that it was out of committee and before, in the Law Department, to prepare this for tonight. And with the comments made in the past meetings, and out of respect to past City Council members approximately eight years ago, and with Counselor Glenn being on the committee and with his knowledge and history he brought to the table, I believe the committee reacted responsibly and cautiously in making this change. It was under subsection C of the legislation that's before us where the term "waive" is included in this on first-time offenders and only pertaining to exterior property areas of Chapter 1806, with exceptions to 1806, 14, 15, and 16, which is motor vehicles, which falls under the LPD. Again, I think we proceeded very cautiously in this. I'm pleased with the conclusion that the committee at the last meeting came to. I'm prepared to support it this evening, and hopefully with the departments keeping some records, we can do a review maybe this time next year to see how we fared and positive, you know, action done by the citizens once they receive the initial letter, knowing they can get the $50 waived if they, the first-time offenders, and take care of the code violation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? Mr. President. Mr. McLean.
I would like to thank Ms. Adams for her due diligence on this because this was not a light subject. What they did work eight years ago was specifically designed to protect the blight in our city. And I think what we did with these changes was just a minor tweak. It gives the opportunity for the homeowner that's never had a code violation, that is the homeowner that lives in that house, the opportunity to have a waived, a mulligan for the $50 fine. It gives them the opportunity to have a better relationship with our city and to work together with us. And I think that's what we did as a committee to try to further enhance this particular set of rules. And it was just on some exterior things, no interior stuff. So we had some really lengthy discussions, and Ms. Odom provided letters of what would be sent out, and I really think the work that was done eight years ago was good work. I think all we did was tweak it a little bit to give it a better understanding to some of the first-time offenders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Neifer?
Just briefly, I was the one who brought this to council and referred it originally to the committee, and I just want to express my appreciation since I'm not a member of that committee, but of both being inclusive of other councilors as well as just getting the process done and doing what they thought was best and getting this legislation back to us and helping us get back to work here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neifer. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Neifer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 22812 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Before we do miscellaneous business, I'm going to, I guess, interject one item I have since we didn't do it under the privilege of the floor, which has been a normal practice, Mr. Blas, that we don't necessarily comment or take action at that time. But I, just for your peace of mind, I'd like to refer the information regarding the South Main Corridor to the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
For conversation.
Second.
Motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ms. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to comment, in light of these two pieces of legislation regarding our Phase Seven of the Energy retrofit project, there was just an article, and you got that, didn't you, Mr. Giger in Lydah? I'll move on. An article in USA Today regarding cities across the country who have been severely cut back on finances. It's kind of a mirror story of ours where the state is cut back on its funding, and one of the solutions was just this, that what we've done through these seven phases and retrofit our streetlights, our stoplights, our different buildings that we have, and the savings that will result from that. So I just want to give the accolades to Public Works and everybody who was involved in that, the different committee, or the Public Works Committee that shepherded this along the way and produced these results. So we're in line where we need to be across the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Mr. Neifer?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. McLean?
One small item, I just wanted to echo some of Mr. Glenn's wording about the Sperryon contract. I truly oppose those myself, but I do believe at this point we are working with our civil service of correcting that. That's the reason I voted yes on that tonight, but normally in most cases I do oppose those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'm going to take y'all's time. I've got about 10 items. Real quick. I've got a lot of, I've got a lot of phone calls the last couple of days. One concerning what was going on at the post office today. Not so much who they were making fun of, but the way they were doing it. I felt shame as a councilman because it was in my ward. They had our president looking like Hitler, and it was very offensive to some of the families who had family members who went through different things during that period. And I'm asking if in any way possible we could make sure that does not happen tomorrow. There was a lot of individuals that were offended. I see the Law Director, you already said something. Did you have?
Not unless you have a specific question.
Okay. No, I don't have a question. I just, I just, I really felt ashamed that they were allowed to do that. Not so much who the person was, but even whether it be any president before Obama, respect the position, don't offend anybody like they did that, like they did today. A couple of things around the East Side of Town, Schoolover area. I've been getting a lot of reports, there's a group of kids who have these mustangs, they've been burning out all up and down the streets, they've been running stop signs. I had another councilor today seen the burnouts even on my street. We've stopped them, they do not live in the city, but they're tearing up the city streets. I'm asking for if we can get some extra patrol, maybe up in that area, please, it's on the Summit Edwards Brower area. I mean, they're running straight through these stop signs. Emerson isn't there no more as an active school, but there's still plenty of kids in that neighborhood. On October 25th, the East Side Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood Association will be out patrolling, helping the officers. I know it's going to be a busy night on trick-or-treat night. We have Auburn Light that will be in the car, we'll be passing on candy and just kind of doing a safety patrol, the block watch. Anybody that wants to get involved, meet us at Forest Park Church at 5:00 PM. If you have donations of candy that you would like to see the kids get, please meet us there again, October 25th at 5:00 PM at Forest Park Church. For the 27th, don't forget it's Make a Difference Day. East Side Neighborhood Association, anybody who wants to help, we will be teaming up with Midway East, Inbecca Meat City, at hours of 9:00 AM and 12:00 PM. The Bradfield Center just recently this year established a drum line, drill team. I am in charge of the drum line. We actually placed, I believe we won the mayor's trophy, first time ever being a parade, and these kids never ever had sticks in their hand before, ever, didn't know a lick of music, and they came through in two weeks and won. So I'm not patting myself on the back, but if they listen, I can make them sound great. So if you know anybody between the ages of 12 and 18 that would like to come out and participate, we're going to actually do it on Election Day at the Bradfield Center between 6:00 and 7:30. Lima Explosion preseason ticket, they got a preseason game that will happen on 27th. Season tickets are $75. They've been asking for the city's support. September 27th from 3:00 to 5:00, also within Third Ward, the Second Baptist Church, they're going to have, it's open to the community, free games for kids. They're asking that you don't wear a costume, just come as you are, and just have some fun. October 24th, I want to call for the Neighborhood Concerns Meeting at 6:00 PM concerning the Lacknip, the fire station. So that's Wednesday, okay? 6:00 PM. I've got a couple of calls on some lights being burned out. I've been doing pretty good. Easy patrol, Third Ward every other night, and Saul probably gets tired of hearing me saying there's a light up. But if you have them out, please contact me, and I will make sure that they get it. They've been doing excellent, 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 getting out and taking care of the lights that belong to the city. So my hat's off to Saul and his team, I thank them, please let them know I thank them. And the other issue, real quick, in the 2010 codified ordinance, Chapter 618, it says "No person shall keep or harbor any one pit bull at his or her residence." We have a serious problem on North Street. We have an individual that owns about nine dogs, and they work all night, they're not in the proper caging, they are not, they are tagged, the dog warden's been out several times. Each resident within his dwelling is saying they own their own dog separately. Okay? The city does not have our own dog warden, therefore Allen County has to listen to the state. The state pretty much trumped, or they did trump, what we've established within the city, but we do have our city jurisdiction. What I would like to do on the meeting of the 24th, if possible, I want this to be a co-meeting, and if we can at that time address what the city can do and what the city cannot do within the Neighborhood Concerns Committee. So my motion would be, I would like to make the motion that we address the dog issue.
Just refer that section to your town committee.
Okay. I'd like to refer Section 618, Tac 15 of the codified ordinance of 2010 to the Neighborhood Concerns Committee.
Second.
Thank you.
The motion in the second is to refer Section 618 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima to the Neighborhood Concerns Committee.
Correct.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I'm at a loss as to what the issue is concerning this, since it went through Safety Service Committee, and we have given more power to the police to issue citations that were never there before.
Correct.
So that they're not, hands aren't tied waiting on the county dog ward.
Correct. But they haven't been given.
Well, that's not my understanding, and if I can, I don't know if the chief is prepared. You'd given a report about six months ago.
Mr. President.
Chief.
I will be more than happy to get the address. I'm kind of at a loss here, I'm not sure what the address on North Street you're referring to is.
He got to the point, not to make this a long discussion, but it got to the point where the individual even had to go to the prosecutor's office, and he was told by the dog warden to go to the prosecutor's office because things weren't being handled. Cops had been called out. By that time, the residents go out there and say, "Shut up, shut up, shut up," or they take the dogs inside, cops hit the alley, they leave. It's not that they're not coming out, but they haven't caught them. Then they leave, and there's more than one resident that's saying that it's happening. And I've seen it for myself. And not only, it got to the point where they threatened to put the dogs on children, they threatened to let the dogs loose. I've talked with the grandfather, the youngest son that lives in the resident, but the mother was just, it was just not good.
And I will be certainly more than happy to get some additional information from you after council is over, and I can look into it, and I'll have somebody get back with you regarding the specifics of this case, because right now, I mean, I'm at a loss, I don't really have any information to give you, but it certainly sounds like something that we should be looking into, because if there's a violation of city ordinance, we can and in fact should still be enforcing that, and so we will certainly do that.
I brought it to the attention of the individual, the officer who came to the Neighborhood Association meeting, and yet it's still continuing. And the majority of them are pit bulls, and they are not caged properly. And I think so, actually.
And again, I will be more than eager to find out what's going on with that, because again, if there's a violation of city ordinance and it's been brought to the officer's attention, then in fact, I need to find out why it wasn't addressed, and certainly we will get back with you and let you know what we find out on that.
If I could, as an attempt to clarify this, Mr. Lowe, are you saying that the law says one pit bull per residence, and the residence at this address is claiming that there are nine different individuals who each separately own a dog, so they are therefore getting around the letter of the ordinance?
Yes, they are. Yes, and the dogs have tags.
Okay.
They are legally tagged.
So that's, I wanted to clarify that, because I thought that's what you were getting at, is that it would be like, you know, nine?
Can nine people live in a house?
Eight of us living in a house, that's not a good thing to think about, but eight of us living in a house, each having a little pit bull, is potentially being used as a way around this law. So I understand what you're saying about tightening it up. All of the other enforcement issues you've discussed should proceed, but I think that that might be the issue that needs to be clarified in terms of the ordinance and the way it's written, so.
So let's do this. I'll stand corrected, and we'll go with the reading as what was planned for the 24th for the Lacknip, and we'll speak, and then we can rectify it, and we'll bring it to the committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further?
No, sir.
That count as 10. Mr. Tevin?
I only have one item this evening, and it is about the lease agreement with Lacknip. And I attended the Neighborhood Concerns Committee meeting where this was discussed, and it was a very brief meeting, and I think that the committee will, along with Lacknip, And I attended the Neighborhood Concerns Committee meeting where this was discussed, and it was a very brief meeting, and I think that the committee will, along with LACNIP, work through this issue. One concern I had, I did not feel that the committee and LACNIP were on the same page for that meeting. It was, you know, I think it was an unfortunate event that occurred, because LACNIP is a volunteer organization, and they do great things in the community, and their goal is to make our community better, and I think all council members understand that. You know, city council asking those questions relative to, do you have the financial wherewithal to take on what you're about to enter into a contract with, I think the questions were appropriate. I think that what should have probably happened when it was obvious that LACNIP wasn't prepared to answer those questions, it should have just gone to another meeting. It really bothered me that I'm seeing an editorial in Lima News, you know, pointing out faults with volunteers. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the way we should conduct ourselves as a council, and I don't think that anyone intended that to happen, but it didn't take long for the media to grab that and run with it. And I just, I feel bad about the situation, and I'm very hopeful that as those meetings move forward, the questions that were asked will be answered, the communication's going to take, take place in a way that is not adversarial. So I'm not pointing fingers at anyone here, I just really walked out of that meeting stunned, and that's my two cents on, on the LACNIP situation. I think that the idea of putting this on second reading, pulling another committee meeting, is very appropriate, and I would, I would urge that people, you know, step back and think about it before we get into another meeting like that. And that, you know, if I were LACNIP, I would want to look at this, and I think that, my take on it is, I don't think that they had, that they had the time to do, to perform the due diligence to give the answers to the questions, and that they didn't feel comfortable, and it's the way the words came out, it's like we're going to go watch a presidential debate here, and they'll get, they'll get a soundbite? Well, they got a soundbite that night. We don't need a meeting with soundbites, we need a meeting with substance, and I'm very confident that this committee has the ability and the mindset to work through it with LACNIP. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teppin. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of items. As Councilor Low mentioned, Make a Difference Days this Saturday, check with area organizations to see how you can help. Due to the issue referred to the Economic Development Committee, the zoning overlay for Kiwi Corners, and the three documents we received tonight, I would like to call a meeting November 12th at 5:30 in these chambers, and that meets with your schedule, Councilor Glenn and Councilor McLean, November 12th at 5:30.
That's good for me.
Okay. And then finally, I think we all received this, it opened house, it's hard to believe it's here, the dedication and celebration of the Shirley Daley Senior Village, it'll be this Friday, the 26th, from 10:30 to 12:30 at 1003 West Spring Street. And you can attend, I know I've driven by it, I'm looking forward to seeing the inside of the development, but looks like a great addition to the area and to that land. So again, it's this Friday, the 26th, at 10:30 to 12:30, the dedication of the Shirley Daley Senior Village. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, got a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Vlas, Ms. Decker back there, she's been real quiet, but I know she played a big role in putting this together. We had a lot of folks come around knocking on doors, they did a lot of work, and hopefully, I know, that we can get this South Main Street corridor together, and I can remember when I was a little kid, we had all that stuff down there, going to raise right up in the area, so it's great. Thank you guys for the hard work, I know you got more work to do. Frook Street, Nye, Ambassador Street, State Street, we had opportunity to get around and look and estimate some of the things that need to be done. I appreciate the garbage company, we had some couches out there, they took care of that really quick, got them done, we had some cars out there, went by, the day of lunchtime, they were gone. Thank you guys so much. I mean, I just knocked on the door and let you guys know, I will not be walking the alleys at nighttime, I know that, because you guys didn't know who I was, so it just happened, I got a little bit behind, and behind schedule, started talking, so I had to get behind them alleys a little bit, but them were some of the things, and I'd like to thank Saul and Mr. Beebe for taking care of Elm Street Alley there, great job getting that taken care. We got the Coats for Kids, whoever donated 25 coats, I know you want to give a name, thank you so much, wish I could give you a letter, and God bless you guys. Thank you so much on that. On Make a Difference Day on 10/27, Whole Park Neighborhood Association is teaming up with the South Side, they're going to be in the College Street area there, we're going to have hot dogs and chili soup there, we're going to be hitting some more alleys, we've got a couple of volunteers on trucks, I will be contacting Pat Franger House, Alvis House, Alvis House, they help us out a little bit there, and we're going to get around to everybody, so, you know, we got Midway East, all of us, you know, we're going to try to hit everybody, we, the alleys and different things like that, get them done. And the reason I say the alleys, I've been so touched on the alleys, we seen people dumping garbage in them, and no waste management can, not allowed to go back in there and take them off properties, but we had some volunteers came out, brought it on the street, vacant lots, they've been doing it, and I don't know, the young lady who answered the phone for Mike Capella, and I know she take a lot of calls from there, I appreciate her so much that she take care right away when the garbage not... Our city league championship, the Sharks came back and beat the Panthers, was outstanding game. I hope we get to see some of our little future Spartans there, they played a good game there, so let's make sure, congratulate them kids on what they've been doing. Also, I want to thank Pastor Dennis, Pastor Dennis, thank you so much for what you have done, helping me out, keeping track of the areas that we want to, he put everything on his computer there, and he just showed me each day I had a map to take care, so I've been doing this all week long, trying to make sure we got everybody, all the complaints taken care. I know I still got a couple more people who's not at home, I'm getting around tomorrow, finish all that up. We will be hitting the weed out area this following weekend, so thanks Pastor Dennis, what you've done for me. Thank you. That's it.
That was a couple. I don't have anything this evening, Ms. Townsend?
Mr. Ulstro.
Mr. Ulstro? I guess I do have something this evening. Mr. Ulstro?
I'm sorry. There was a remark earlier about what to do in case of a street light out. I want to assure the public that there's actually two ways to report a street light that is out. One is to call the Street Division at 221-5165. You can call anytime, day or night. During the day, there is a live operator on, during the night, there is a recording machine on. The other way a light can be reported is through the City of Lima's website. There is a place there where you can file actually any kind of a comment or complaint, and it will be forwarded to the right department. It is important for the Street Division to know what street lights are out. Some of the street lights are on our circuits, some of them are on AEP circuits, and it's our electricians and our administrative staff down there source them out, gets the complaint to the right place, and gets that turned around. And in the case of AEP, those are leased lights, so it's important for us to keep a record of when those complaints come in, as there's remediation if they are not repaired in a certain amount of time. So again, the easiest way is calling 221-5165, report a street light out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ulstro. As you were speaking, there is one thing I guess I do want to bring up. Mr. Low, you commented on the issue of the demonstration that was going on in front of the post office today, and you had stepped out of the pre-council meeting, but I brought it up then, and I'm told that it is a right of free speech to do that, regardless of how despicable. So I just wanted you to know that I briefly discussed it in pre-council, and people have the right to free speech in this country, whether we agree or disagree with it, okay? And I think it also was a disgusting display. I asked if it could be, or how it was being permitted, and the fact is that it's a right of free speech, okay? So, Ms. Townsend?
Mr. President, I move that Lima City Council adjourn until November 5th at 7:00 PM in these chambers.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to, for Lima City Council to adjourn until November 5th at 7:00 PM in these chambers. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries, council is adjourned.